Is everybody in? The board is declining Dr. Bragg's request for the Lemoil North Modified Unified Union School District to pay tuition to another school based on current residency laws and the fact that we have an operating school district.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Any and seeing none, those in favor of approving this motion say aye.
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 Those abstained? Aye. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, consider tuition rates as designated.
Hi, so we have been asked by Orleans South Supervisory Union to consider whether or not we would discount tuition rates if we were considered a designated receiving school for their students, primarily Welkup. They will be going to their board later this month. The Welkup Board will decide if they want to designate three schools, so they would have Hardwick, Hazen, and then either Lemoil North or Peoples. You know, I have some information to share at this point, as this is sort of a strategic question and/or a contractual question. I would request that the board move into executive session as prior public knowledge could put the district at a disadvantage in this transaction.
All in favor of going into executive session with Deb, Kat? All present?
Yeah.
All in favor of the motion seconded or?
I guess technically I don't move, I ask.
Yeah.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Those in favor say aye.
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 Those abstained? Okay, moving into executive session. Okay, we're now, we're now back in regular session and Deb, you have your piece to read.
It's going to be business manager on behalf of the board.
She's not back yet.
Oh, she's gone.
Deb, are you all set?
I think so.
It should be business manager on behalf of the board.
Okay. The motion would read something like authorize the business manager and/or superintendent on behalf of the Lemoil North Modified Unified Union School District Board to enter negotiations regarding tuition discounts as a designated school district.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Any and seeing none, all those in favor of this motion say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Those abstained? Okay, motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Um, 454, please.
And actually, this is a little bit, goes a little bit beyond 454. I just wanted to summarize the biggest changes for us going forward. The Commission on the Future of Public Education roles and responsibilities have changed dramatically to such an extent that Superintendent Mike Leifleider, Nicole Mace, and Megan Roy have stepped down from the commission because they are not pleased with what they see as lack of transparency from the Agency of Education. So, that will see, this group is going to decide what is within local control and what is within state level control. The School District Redistricting Task Force has been articulated, and I don't know most of these people, but Dr. Jen Botsa-Jurins, who's a retired superintendent, is a retired rural superintendent, and she is fantastic. So our work is going to be discussions with them. We are hearing that they will, and the agency will, be putting out information for communities, for community input. We are watching that because this is driven by this group and by the Agency of Education, not local communities. Couple of class size minimums will go into effect July 1, 2026. So we have a year, they're looking at three years of consecutive inability to manage class sizes, and manage is not the right word. They don't have class sizes designated for pre-K and K, but it is 1 through 12. The numbers are fairly large. 10 students, minimum average for grade 1, 12 for grades 2 through 5, 15 for grades 6 through 8, and 18 for grades 9 through 12, only in those required content areas. So you can still have your AP courses, your specials, your, you know, classes like History of Chess, which is wildly popular, and those courses are not impacted. So the key here is three consecutive years. We, we may be right there, so I'm not super concerned about that yet. If three years, consecutive years go by and we are not able to meet those average class sizes, then we can, board can apply, apply for a waiver. I have no idea what that looks like and what the decision-making process will be with that waiver. Statewide graduation requirements, the agency is going to make those decisions by January 1, 2026. Statewide school calendar, they pushed out to January 15, 2027. Again, it's the Agency of Education. Don't know how they're going to do that. Here's the one that's most interesting to me. On or before December 1, 2025, the agency has to deliver a report about how they envision having a statewide financial data and student information system consolidation guidance. And included in this is how to make sense of the collective bargaining agreements. This is December 1, 2025, that's a few months from now. That is the biggest chunk of work that needs to happen, and the fact that this is the date given to it suggests that they haven't yet figured out what that looks like and how complicated that is, because that is the most complicated process. School construction, uh, let's see. Those are the big ones. The foundation formula is going to be interesting because students will be given 15,000 plus sort of per student for resources and education. Districts will be able to decide whether they need to raise more to provide more resources for their students. I ask the board this, who do you think is going to be most able to do that? Will it be the districts that have resources? Or will it be the districts that don't? I think that answer is fairly clear. That is going to set up the state for, I would imagine, many, 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 many lawsuits because that feels like the most inequitable thing imaginable. So there's that. Behavioral threat assessment teams implementation, the board did a really nice job of getting going on that process, and we are going to be having a second reading and adoption of that piece tonight. That is also in H480, under the miscellaneous education bill. We need to have that in place, and we will, we already do. Virtual learning is going to look different. There are some pieces that need to go into making a decision to provide virtual learning, but we will be able to do that in certain instances and with certain caveats. That is a piece that we're looking at in the latest bills. Cell phone, personal electronic device, and social media use. The board will have to develop a policy based on the Secretary of Education's developed model policy after January 1, 2026. So they will have a policy in place January 1, 2026. We are working towards that now. There will be exceptions to this, so there will be certain students because of certain reasons who are allowed to have their devices with them, but we will not, we need to have a social media free and phone free school environment. That is the wording from the Agency of Education, and that is what has been voted on. That will have implications for after-hours communications. I know that sometimes our athletic directors and coaches communicate via social media. They can still do that, but they cannot require students to participate in that, nor can they make it difficult or penalize a student for not responding or understanding a schedule because of lack of social media use. We had surveys that went out, and Rainey, I don't know if you can speak to that, but I know that the 7 through 12 teachers were, were asked about this, and the majority of them believe that a cell phone free environment is a better environment. A survey went out, 7 through 12, to families and students. Rainey, do you want to report on that?
Yeah, we sent a survey out to incoming 7th grade families, and we also included outgoing senior families to gauge where folks were at on this subject. We got more than two-thirds responses on that survey from a parent or multiple parents in those households. 84% saw a recent communication sent out from this campus talking about changes coming at the state level. Obviously, that was then passed as law recently. We have, and actually it's easier if I flip this, sorry. Here. We had... We had, we did a sliding scale. How do you feel about a cellphone-free school day on the Lemoil Union GM TCC campus? We had about 65% fully support, or in the range of we support to fully support that. I think people are in favor of this. I think the question, based on a lot of the text feedback that we asked for, folks want their kids to still be able to have a phone on their person or accessible to them, whether it's in a backpack, in a locker, because parents still feel that they need instantaneous connection to those students. And I think that's going to be the biggest hurdle for us to try to have to deal with slash communicate. One of the questions we included in the survey was, did you know that you can call your school's front office to get in contact with your child? And the percentage was high, but there was a few that said, no, I didn't know that was, I could do that, which like I find crazy. That said, parents still want very quick access to their students in the event of an emergency, and I just think that then is paramount on us to continue to drive home the fact that you're going to get that information from us. Creating your Infinite Campus Parent Portal and making sure you have all of the correct communication settings that you want, that will allow them to hear from us, it's just going to be really, really big and really key on us to make sure those folks are doing that. And I will say, Michelle Sepka, who is our Infinite Campus guru, has a list of those folks. So, we've got a bit of like a communication campaign that's going to start up here in the beginning of August to make sure folks are utilizing the systems we have in place. So...
And I know that Chris Hennessy and Beth Ann Peary will be having meetings with families to help assuage some of their concerns and to help answer questions. One of the things that they're going to present is information from other districts that indicate the decrease in cyberbullying, texting inappropriate things, referrals to hazing, harassment, and bullying way down, given the removal of cell phones in the school environment. So, more to come on that. There are many more bills that were passed. The only other one that I'm going to pay any attention to right now is the epinephrine one, and it essentially says that if a student or adult does not have a plan that says you can administer epinephrine, and there is an event that trained people can administer epinephrine. So, that will be important in the event that we have situations that require treatment of anaphylaxis. So, those are the major bills that affect education and the educational environment.
Any thoughts, folks? Not, we'll move into the bigger.
And I will make this, oh, Kyle.
Oh, you can talk to her.
Sorry, I was trying to find that hand. Just one question about H54, Kat. I know that we're supposed to, the district's supposed to make a recommendation, I believe, at the end of the summer of who we feel we would like to potentially redistrict with. Is that something, sorry?
Yeah, Deb actually is going to talk about the meeting that you and she attended. I think you might be talking about that.
Yes.
And maybe not, but that's a different question. That question has to do with, are we hoping to preserve SUs? And there is more back and forth there, and I can, I can offer some commentary, but I'm hoping that we can wait till we actually get to that edge at that point.
Oh, sorry. Yes, 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 yes.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
So, yeah, I'll make this as quick as possible. I've been now with the district for just over a year, and I brought these two big purchases to the board last year in an effort to centralize our purchasing. We're happy to say that we had about, just over $100,000 in savings by doing this, as well as other centralized technology purchasing, which allowed us to put that money towards infrastructure upgrades throughout the district. So, the centralized purchasing is definitely working. The first bid for Chromebook purchase, we're moving the middle school to Chromebooks as well to kind of standardize the technology that we're using in the classroom. So, that first RFP was sent to three vendors for the, sorry, 25, 26 school year, and due to shipping delays and manufacturer delays, it's important that we move forward with this today to have these devices by the start of school. One vendor did not bid, and then one vendor met the specifications but was a little high. So, at this time, the administration is recommending that the board award the bid to Resilient Networks for the centralized Chromebook purchase in the amount of $158,454.90 to be paid from the FY26 General Fund.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, how many units are we talking about here?
It is, sorry. This is for 345 units. And I'd say this is pretty much in line with what we made last year for device, with, I think, maybe a $25 increase. I mean, a lot of that's just due to manufacturers adding on and the tariff anticipation. And I'll also say that moving middle school to Chromebooks has drastically reduced the cost that we're putting towards the middle school. So, I'm optimistic that we will see even more of a savings this year with this purchase.
Another question. All in favor of the wording to the Chromebooks, say aye.
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 All those who abstained?
And then, along the same lines, we separate Chromebooks from computer and peripherals, so laptops, desktops, monitors, all that. We're actually purchasing a lot less this year for these devices. We have some stock that we're using up, and then we're also trying to transition some staff to using Chromebooks if they don't need the full capability of a PC. So, we again had two bids, one no bid. Of one of the two bids, there were items missing from the bid that we had put in the RFP. So, at this time, the administration is recommending that the board award the bid to Resilient Networks for centralized computer and peripheral purchase in the amount of $62,903.79 to be paid from the FY26 General Fund.
So moved.
Any further question?
I guess just, again, how many units are we talking about here?
So, this is 37 laptop, 37 of one style, nine of another, about six monitors, some compact desktops, and 10 Soundbar, so not very much this year compared to last year.
Thank you.
Another question. And C N, all in favor of approving this bid for the computers and peripherals, say aye.
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 All those who abstained? Okay.
Thank you. And now, I'm going to interject. Kyle, I apologize. That discussion should have happened with the rest of the 454. I didn't see the Deb piece in there, but she was just going to continue the conversation based on the meeting that she attended. So, Deb, can you do that?
Sure. So, at the meeting that we attended, there basically was a lot of talk about alignment and teamwork with other supervisor reunions and districts, talk about trying to be sure we align with demographics that match up. And Kyle, jump in if I'm missing anything really significant. But they also provided us with some generic motion language, if not motion, at least statements for the boards to consider, both a supervisor reunion board as well as a district, a school district board that exists under a supervisor reunion, which is this board and the Cambridge Board. Basically, the statement is that the Lemoil North Supervisor Reunion, being composed of member districts, moves to remain a supervisor reunion with a larger governance region to the extent practical under the terms of 454. And then it goes on, "Our purpose is to optimize cost savings and efficiencies where possible while maintaining local democratic engagement, oversight, and accountability in order to achieve excellent education outcomes for our communities, children, and youth at a cost Vermonters can afford." And then similarly, the school district statement supports that from being a district within the supervisor reunion. I've been trying to wrap my head around redistricting as well as how a supervisor reunion would benefit differently than being part of a centralized office. And as far as I can tell, and Kyle, maybe you've got more in this, the benefit of remaining a supervisor reunion structure is that the districts under that structure or within that structure may still retain some voting on local control and school closure or not, school closure. Outside of that, I'm not sure that, be honest, when we merged and did merge, I never really understood the difference between a central office and a supervisor reunion, because the functionality, the operation, is so similar. And I'm not really clear under H454 whether you stay to supervisor reunion if those individual districts would retain the same local vote control that they have now. I just don't know enough about the structure. And as far as who will be voting for what budgets, who will be voting to close what schools, who will be voting, who will be making those decisions ultimately, if that makes sense?
I have some input here from some colleagues, and then some, and someone from the V S B A that says, "Moving to remain an SU doesn't change the charge of the redistricting task force and the work they will be conducting." My true wondering for this group is, are there other policy levers that will achieve the same ends that they're hoping for? In other words, SUs is a pretty narrow policy focus to preserve small schools and community voice. Can we think outside the box towards other policy levers to achieve the same ends that does not hold the same inefficiencies that SUs may? I think the big piece here is, you know, and I will say, pre-ACT 46, and Deb and I know this, we traveled to all the towns and all the boards, and everyone had a different curriculum. Everyone had different contracts at one point. The benefit to moving to a Lemoil North Modified Unified Union School District is that we pretty much took the same board members with us, but then all of that was aligned. I'm wondering if the board just needs to consider, because I think it's fair to say we are going to be joining with others. Who is most like us? OSU, definitely. Fairfax, Fletcher, Montgomery, very close to us. I don't know. I mean, again, this is the will of the board.
Even Lake Region's part of our sports.
Lake Region, that's right.
You're thinking, yeah, we play in sports.
Right.
I know we play more earlier, but I think that's too far.
Popular is too far.
Yeah, I just, I'm sharing some conversations I've had with other V S B A executive committee members, and it just seems like it might be to our best interest to maybe have some conversations with some of these other similar boards, superintendents, business managers, just because it is such an incredibly tight timeline, right? I think that the reports and maps are due December 1, right? It's four and a half months away, and it seems like it would be in our best interest to maybe have some idea of, you know, what would the benefits of joining with District XYZ versus ABC? And, you know, are there potential, what are the potential savings opportunities in each scenario? At least kind of have some preliminary ideas so that, you know, we're ready to push back as needed on this, on this tight timeline. Just some thoughts.
Are you signed the button?
I did, thank you. Yeah, and Bart, that's exactly what the Rural Alliance was recommending in this Zoom call that Deb and I attended, that we really be proactive with reaching out to surrounding districts or unions and really having those conversations, because that's, you know, ultimately, we're trying to be as much in control of this process as we can. So, I think that's kind of, at least what I took away from that meeting, other than more questions like you, Deb, and a little bit of uncertainty around the supervisor reunion model versus the district, although I know Rural Alliance pushes for the union model. And, you know, I only have an experience being on this board here, but the biggest sort of homework takeaway was definitely start having these conversations and start having them fast and now. So, I think there's no time to lose.
Deb?
I agree, Kyle, and Bart. It is about starting these conversations with our neighbors and districts that may geographically align with us as well as demographically align with us. And Kat, I was listening to your, when you were talking about other policy levers, one came to mind is once we know maybe who we're going to combine with and be aligned with, or who we wish to be aligned with, then there's the talk about travel time, right? If we have a geographically isolated, small, currently a district, but it would be a small region within the bigger district, that would be worth advocating that it's, even though there's not that many kids and we're struggling for the class size, they're geographically isolated, and it puts an undue burden on the students and impacts the learning experience of those students. You know, always bringing it back to the student experience and the student-centric to ensure that they're getting equitable services within at least this bigger district. How those conversations start, Kat, I think maybe it's just a matter of inviting all the boards to come together. You know, is it superintendents? Is it superintendents and business managers first?
I think it's board chair, business manager, superintendent, and V S B A rep.
I like the idea of that smaller group, at least for initial conversation. I like the idea of that smaller group, at least for initial conversations. It seems like the right way to go and it sounds like everybody.
And I know that O S S U would be willing to meet in August.
Perfect. Yeah, time, time is of the essence.
Definitely better to be proactive than to be on the back end of it.
Yeah, absolutely, Jeff. I, I don't know how many of you have actually read four fifty-four, but there's some pretty aggressive things. In the back of my mind, a lot of these committees that they're putting together. A O E gave, you know, signed off on giving themselves six new employees, starting twenty-six, which is going to allow them to do a lot of data work and the rest of it. I guess the part that surprised me most about the bill is they wrote into it very casually. It's a school district, some don't walk their heels and come up to where the state thinks they're going, or they're going to have several years to do something and then the state can come in, take over your school system. I was right in, almost, almost floored me. Their initial startup cost for this is three point eight five million dollars in next year's budget. That does not include any per diem money for these committees. If I were on one of these committees, I would already have the maps drawn and start putting out the pieces right now. That's how I would. So I agree, we need to move this thing and get ahead of it. No thoughts? Kyle?
Yeah, I agree with all that. Is, is it possible, should we? I mean, geographically, I guess we don't have too, too many options that are actually viable, but to put together a list of all the district partners that we should try to meet with and really.
You're about to hear it.
Go ahead, Steph.
Okay, okay. Lake Region, North Country, O S S U, Fairfax, Berkshire, Bakersfield, Montgomery, Richmond, Fletcher.
Can I speak?
Sure.
I think that as far as Cambridge is concerned, we are much closer to Fairfax and the M M U. In fact, we have students who live closer to either of those schools than to Lemoilne. So that would also be another good direction to look at too.
Thank you. Okay, it looks like we have a little bit of work to do. Take care of that. Policy review.
This is the second reading of the Behavioral Threat Assessment Team. That is now a required policy. We have had this in place for five years. And I, if you recall, when I brought it up at the last meeting, this is in response to the fact that there were so many districts that didn't have any policy at all around emergency response and behavioral threat assessment teams. So this is putting that formally into place. But again, it is what we have had for four years. And so you received this policy at the last meeting and this is the second reading. And we would move to adopt this as our official policy.
I would like to make a motion to adopt F seven behavioral threat assessment teams as an official policy.
Second.
Any further discussion? I'm seeing now, I was in favor of adopting F seven, say aye.
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 Close your stand. Now under other business, I have Kat's sheet of paper here and she says August eleventh, we have what we might have a Florida retreat.
Right. That would be the, the traditional second Monday of a month. And that would be a good time, I think, to have a board retreat. That is just the board and me and no one else. So we're throwing that date out for you to consider. I already have it in my planner since it's the second Monday of the month.
I say, I guess we can put it down as a second Monday of the month and see where we go from there.
And we're actually trying to do something a little nicer. So we'll let you know what the location is, it might be here, and what the, what the venue is.
Any other business? I'm seeing now, do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.